I'd like everyone to stand for the Fledge of Allegiance and to remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all those serving across the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being so patient while we had a brief attorney-client review. First order of business, I just want to let everyone know, we're going to put this on the meeting, the Village of Woodbury Building Department is moving. This Friday, October 19th, and Monday, October 27th, they will be closed. They will reopen on Tuesday, October 23rd, at their new location, which is Village Hall, rear of the Woodbury Fire District Building, at 455 Route 32, Highland Mills. Just want to make sure everyone is aware of that, and this will be our last meeting here in this building. Our next meeting, which is scheduled for November 7th, will be at the Village Hall. Okay, next item. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes from October 3rd? If so, do I have a motion to accept?
All the minutes.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay, so that's three yes, one abstaining. And just for the record, let me try to think here. Mitu Tadju will not be here at the meeting. He had a fee line.
Family emergency.
Thank you. Also, I forgot, I'm trying to get this meeting along. This is the Village of Woodbury Planning Board of October 17th, 2018. To my right, Robert Anzalone; Sandra Cipriani on my left; Chris Gerger on my left. Far corner is Gail Noble, our secretary. Consulting table, we have Natalie, our engineer; we have Jonathan, our landscaper and planner; and our attorney, Rick Goldman. And I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. So with that being done, we did the minutes. Real quick, before we move on. Board members, we received a memo from the building inspector regarding the Woodbury Diner. We received a letter from Mr. Spistow and the Woodbury Diner withdrawing his application before the planning board, which included the addition of exterior deck. Attachments include proposed color renderings, which we all viewed at our last meeting, and elevation of the diner for possible field change to previous approved ARB. Natalie, I know we just briefly spoke about this, the applicant did pull the outdoor seating, the sign over the front of the building, which would have said "Woodbury Diner." If they proceed with that, they are going to go to the ZBA. The road sign, which is on the curb there, that is something to be handled between the person who's designing the sign and the building department, with Gary Thomasberger. This board did review the colors at the last meeting, and I thought we were all in agreement on it, but I just need to make sure that this can be moved forward as a field change. Thoughts on that?
Sure. I think I'm going to defer to Rick on his counsel on this matter, but I did speak with Dennis, and he was kind of under the impression that for ARB approval, since it goes through the public hearing process, they may need to present those materials before the public for approval as it's a change. But again, I will defer to Rick on that.
Let me see what we said. Let me see what we did the last item. Wasn't prepared to, this wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't really talk about it.
No, it was an extra item. When did we, we approved the colors that they presented at the last meeting? And when we found out the colors that we approved originally, original application that was before us, I want to say April, May, I don't remember if we set the November 17th, November 7th, no, that's our next meeting. Or whenever we did approve it, we approved the certain colors. As we found out at last meeting, the colors that we approved on the stucco are the colors that they have shown us last meeting. So they did, they changed the colors that were not approved. So the colors on the building are what they want now, naturally, and they want to put the, the two differences are the metal piece over the entryway, the roof color, to match the tile insert on the columns. Those are the only two differences from last time, because the stucco, the metal roofing is going to change, the terracotta awnings, we saw that material, and granite.
But in our last meeting, they were going to make whatever changes they wanted and submit those by October 19th, that was Friday. And then you authorized to draft a resolution consistent with all that, and it would be on for another night for your consideration of that resolution approval. So I'm not sure what's being asked for now.
Gary's asking it to be a field change. Did you see his cover letter?
No.
It may not, it might be in your mailbox. Because he's withdrawing the application that we heard on October 3rd. They're removing the exterior deck and the pavement in the back. Because he's asking, please, as soon as available, planning board meeting advised they can either proceed as a field change or need to return to the planning board. So I'm, so we're asking you, field change, or do they have to come back with a public hearing?
Go ahead. You actually have no jurisdiction to do anything, it was going to withdraw the application. If they say, we're withdrawing our application, then your job is done. Then it's up to Gary to determine whether or not he can issue some permit or not. There's really nothing for you to do. If he's, if he's going to proceed in a way that doesn't need any site plan approval or ARB approval, then Gary could issue a permit, I guess. If Gary determines that he needs an ARB approval, then he needs to, they need to come before the board to do that. I've never seen an ARB approval by a field change.
Okay, because they're going, they're basing the field change on the original approval that we did on the building. I don't have that date in front of me. I didn't bring that file with me. So I guess they want to do a field change with the colors of the tile and the metal awning. So they're sending it back to us as a field change or come back before the board.
You're saying that they're changing the colors from what was previously approved?
Correct.
I don't know how that can be done as a field change. Your code requires for ARB, and if ARB required for commercial establishments, that there be a public hearing on the ARB, and then the board has to act on an ARB. So I don't, I don't understand how you can have ARB by a field change. This isn't where you've approved a curb being put in, and then it's put in eight inches different, and Dennis or Natalie come and say, well, can we have a field change because it's different from what you've approved? I have never seen something where somebody needs an approval and says, well, I don't really need to come for approval at all, just give me a field change. So my answer is, you can't do it.
Okay.
That, he's withdrawn his application, which means that you have no jurisdiction to do anything. And certainly, if he needs, if he's changing something from your prior plan that Gary thinks needs ARB approval, then they have to go through the ARB approval.
So then...
They're only canceling the application for the debt, not for the ARB, in its entirety.
Well, this is a testimony from a letter received withdrawing his application for the planning board.
This is his letter to Gary, to Gary. That's why it's helpful to not do these things at the last minute.
Because the letter says, as the applicant for the owner, this is a formal notice to cancel the application for our peers before the planning board for the approval of modifications to existing plans.
Right.
For the addition of an exterior deck.
Right. I think at our last meeting, we discussed with the applicant that if he was going to seek approval for the debt, the outside seating, he had some issues with circulation in the parking lot and the parking, and then also the sign on the facade of the building that would require ZBA approval. He was going to withdraw that part of the application, but still proceed with the modifications to the ARB approval, which went through the public hearing process. You guys reviewed the samples, everybody in the room got to review them as well.
But we didn't have the public hearing on yet.
On ARB for the original approval?
For the original approval, but not for the second one.
Exactly. So I think that's why, if everybody agrees, maybe at the next...
Well, we have a public hearing scheduled for November 7th.
Right, for the ARB.
For ARB, so...
If he wants to change colors from what was previously approved, does an ARB change? He needs to have his ARB application, portion of his application, if he's holding that intact. That has to go forward, it's not a field change. Otherwise, you might as well do field changes for all of your ARBs.
Okay, so I guess at this point, we're going to say, the public hearing is still going to hold for November 7th?
He has to submit whatever materials, if materials have been submitted that he's happy with, he doesn't have to submit anything new. Otherwise, he needs to submit something by October 19th. But you'll have the, excuse me?
It's already here.
Okay.
They submitted it on the 15th.
I haven't looked at it, so that's why I don't know.
All right, which is fine. So I guess, I know we asked to have a resolution of approval drawn up for the meeting of the 7th?
Right.
So I guess we have to have it, a motion to modify that resolution, to include only...
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
All right, so I'll, I'll offer a motion, and we request the attorney to modify the resolution on this application pertaining to ARB only, which is colors and the style.
Seconded.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Well, what is this elevation, though, that we're talking about?
Elevation is just...
Attachments include proposed color rendering and elevation of the diner for possible field...
You have a front elevation, left elevation, that's what the elevations mean. They're showing you the pictures. He's just showing you the elevations with the side of the building, the depth being removed.
So he's not changing the elevations at all?
No, it's elevation is where they're showing you what you have.
It's the way he has it written, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Natalie, can you do me a favor and let Maria and Gary know, and then they can reach out to the applicant, that they still have to be here for the November 7th meeting, and we'll have the resolution in hand?
Absolutely, no problem.
All right, thank you. Oh, my goodness. Next item on the agenda is Aon LLC. It says, possible vote on resolution of approval pending the outcome of court decision on a motion for a temporary restraining order and preliminary injunction concerning Local Law 3 of 2018 Hotel Moratorium. Said property is located in 100 Estrada Road, Central Valley, is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Raps in Section 226 Block 1, Lots 21.42.
I don't have trouble, and I recuse myself on this application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let me just see my other files. Representative for the applicant, want to go to the microphone, please? Do you have anything that they want to ask or request before I go to our attorney?
No, I just pointed out, I would just point out, we have been through the resolution, I believe, in three meetings, July 1st and 14th has been reviewed and revised in accordance with the discussion with your attorney, as well as board comments. It looks ready for action.
All right, Rick, do you have any comments to make?
Yes. George is correct, that in fact, this application was brought to the resolution stage, which was a resolution that was reviewed by this board and the applicant, and the wording of the resolution was agreed upon by all, as being appropriate and consistent with the record in this matter. That there had been a hold on the approval of this in accordance with the moratorium as a result of a court appearance today, late this afternoon, actually. There was a determination by the court that allows this application to be voted upon this evening, and in fact, it was directed to be voted upon this evening by the court, consistent with its court determination, which was an oral decision, which would be followed up later on by a written decision. So right now, it is ripe for your vote on whether or not to approve the resolution of approval that was previously approved.
Okay, thank you. So we reviewed this resolution, I have stamped in it August 1st, and there were some changes that were made to this resolution. We don't have a copy of the resolution with those changes. Go ahead.
Okay, I thought it was circulated, but if not, the last revisions were made, I believe, on August 6th.
All I have is a note stamped, it says, less revised July/2, this is August 1st, and it's stamped in August 1st as well. So, go ahead.
I can just have it come into work, the file here.
I mean, there were some minor changes to it. I'm just going to read the ones I have the changes, and I want to make sure that this is what is agreed to, if that's okay?
There was, let me just bring up one of them right here. There were revisions made as of August 6th, and in letter dated August 15th, Mr. Lithgow on behalf of his client in a letter to the chairperson indicated that they are in agreement with the terms set forth in the August 6, 2018 revision, and...
Which I have that letter.
You have that letter?
I have, I have the letter from Mr. Lithgow, and that's the only letter I have. I've never received a copy of the resolution. All right, I just want to make sure...
This was... They were changes made as a result of this planning board's August 1st meeting.
Right.
We then made the changes, submitting them to Mr. Lithgow, to make, as this board had requested, to make sure he had no problems with those. He then said he had no problems with those. No further action was taken because of the moratorium. That calculus changed this afternoon at sometime after 4:00, when the court made its determination. So I didn't realize that this had not been sent to you as of that time.
All right, if I read the certain ones I have notes by, can you confirm that I'm...
Yes.
Okay. Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so on page 8, where it says number 4, letter C?
Yes.
Okay. It's going to read, the applicant shall show on a plan all of the repairs and improvements required to Estrada Road, including but not limited to, 1, a streetlight assembly to be added to the existing utility pole located on the southwest corner of the Zarra Court/ Estrada. 2, if required by the village board, two radar speed feedback signs along Estrada Road, east of the railroad bridge, and 3, a pedestrian crosswalk across Estrada Road in the area of Valley Avenue and west of Bloodgood Court, as recommended by the village's traffic consultant inference, it says, VHB/Mazer, following a review of the pedestrian safety study. The location of the crosswalk will show on the pedestrian safety traffic land prior to its submission to the highway superintendent and must be to the satisfaction of the highway superintendent. And that was the only, those were the changes that were in red, and the word mazer that we added. Is that correct so far?
That's correct so far.
Okay. And if you proceed to page 10, number 7, larger trucks shall be given advanced hours of appropriate route to site. If the New York State thoroughfare is under repair, the hotel operator shall make arrangements with suppliers to restrict deliveries to only delivery vans that can safely pass under the railroad bridge. I think the only word we put in there was railroad.
No, we put in the Estrada Road Railroad Bridge.
Estrada, okay. Oh, why did I cross it out? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right, and then number 9, the first sentence, we said the applicant will work with "the" village to provide, and that's the only change on that one.
No, in 9, on the fifth line down, it also adds a "the" before the planning board. I'm going to just, non-subsequent modifications.
Okay, thank you. So then, if we go to page 11, number 15, the applicant shall perform background checks and screen as part of their normal employment process.
Correct.
Okay, then we jump to page 12, number 2, no, excuse me, number 22 is prior to the issuance of a COO, the applicant shall offer to dedicate the mortar mait and the proposed four-inch horse mait to the village of Woodbury. Correct?
That was the way it was, and it remains the same.
Okay, now number 23?
That was new.
That was new. And I have a note here, Rick Goldman said, no problem with off-site and review?
Yes, and new 23 is prior to the signing, and I'll do this more slowly, but just so that you can listen to it first. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with a memorandum of the village planner dated February 15th, 2015, and April 30th, 2015, to the satisfaction of the village So typical with lots of your other resolutions that say you have to comply with the consultant's memo, that's what this one's, so I'll say it again. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village planner dated February 15th, 2015, and April 30th, 2015, to the satisfaction of the village planner.
Why do I have written here, Rick Goldman, no problem with off-site and review? I have 4A-4C, 9, 10, and 11.
What we have is, under the general conditions...
I was just wanting to make sure, you had that too, okay.
Under the general conditions, you had talked about the offsite improvements. Under the general conditions, I added a sentence.
Where?
I'm just going to tell you what the sentence is.
Okay.
I will read it first, and then I will read it more slowly.
Oh, the any and all offsite improvements?
Yes.
Oh, we have that one, but we didn't, go ahead and read it, so I...
Any and all offsite improvements contained within paragraphs 4A through C, 9, 10, 11, 19, and 22, were volunteered to be accomplished by the applicant, which now will become binding obligations of the applicant, and the applicant waives any objections that this is outside of the scope and powers of the planning board. Should be singular, scope and power of the planning board.
Do you want to read that again, that excerpt?
No, I'm good.
Chris, you're good with that? All right, and I'm just going to jump back up to number 21. Third line down, where it starts the paragraph, after 11:00 PM, the applicant shall dim sight lighting to level. The building inspector determines, we added an S at the end of that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so, all right, so board members, you're okay with any changes?
Yes, yes.
Have a motion to accept?
Seconded.
Are you making a motion?
Oh.
All right, I'll make you have the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, you too?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is congregation of Pachy Shalom De Highland Mills, review and discuss proposed conversion of a portion of an existing single-family dwelling to a shul with site improvements. Said property is located at 230 Scunny Munk Road in Highland Mills, and is known on the village of Woodbury Tax Raps in Section 247 Block 3, Block 4. Just give me a moment to get myself together here. As usual and customary with myself, on the application, let's see, we do have the president who signed the application, we have the properties owned by 230 Scunny Munk LLC, we do have the form that lists the owners, you don't have to have the percentage of the ownership, correct? You just have to have the owner's name, Rick?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I'm presuming, I can't make out the signature, who signed it? Mr. Green, who signed it? Do you know who signed the application?
I believe it was Barry Scholfer.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry maybe I got it out. All right. Why don't you go ahead and give us a re-description of what you plan on doing?
We are on, Pross Project is a conversion of the existing residential dwelling, located at 230 Scunny Munk Road, to become a shul, with a mikvah use for the local congregation in the country hollow area. The proposal is to eliminate the use of the house as a residential dwelling, and use solely as the shul and mikvah use of house of worship under the code. Property is located adjacent to the intersection of Scunny Munk Road and Owens Drive. It's on the northwest corner, it's the corner parcel there. The property is a little less than an acre, it's .938 acres in size, and is located with the RF 2A zoning district. The proposed use of a house of worship is allowed to be used within that zoning district as a special permit use. Property contains an existing one-story residential dwelling, but also includes a basement. Footprint is 1,934 square feet in size. And what we're planning to do is, we're going to convert the existing dwelling to a shul on the first floor. It will be the main sanctuary there, with storage closets and other mechanical areas, as well as a second floor, it's not a second floor, it's a loft, that's built into the attic, and will also be a second shul for the women, a smaller size. And then in the basement, will be the mikvah area, kind of similar to the previous application that we had with the same terms. The shul's proposed for a maximum capacity of 72 seats. The main sanctuary will have 60 seats, and the loft area will become a 12. Based upon that, I'll touch upon the site plan according to the zoning. Based upon your code, the number of seats required totals out to 24 parking spaces under the code. So as part of the site plan, the existing building will remain as is, there's no expansion, there's no alteration to the footprint of the existing building. The applicant is currently working on the floor plans, which we will submit to the board for review, as well as an architectural review submission. They want to do some facade work and change the exterior look of the building, but nothing with the building footprint we will change. Everything will be internal, changes to the building.
Can I just ask a question for clarification? Do you define the religious uses as, and where they would be? If you get set out from me, you have it, the square footage of that combined use for the religious uses, and also, just a clarification, that the remainder of the home is going to continue to be residential?
Okay, I'll answer your last question first. The home will not be residential at all. No remainder of the home will be residential. And the basement floor will be, I believe it's 1,934 square feet, will be the mikvah in the basement, and the first floor, again, is another 1,934 square feet. 1,400 of that will be the main sanctuary, and the remainder of that square footage will be the ancillary items, you know, the lobby, the coat closet, the closets, stairs, etc. And then the loft area would be approximately, about 280 square feet, which is, if you can picture a one-story dwelling, you have that attic area. The main sanctuary goes from first floor all the way to roofline. Inside, it's open, it's a large room, and then on the side, there's a, there'll be a loft that's built into that roofline. So that'll be a smaller portion of the existing construction.
So there'll be no continuing residential use?
Correct.
John, can I just ask you a quick question while you're on that? So to go from the...
So to go from the main sanctuary to the loft, that will be an interior?
Interior surface, correct.
Okay, so just come right up there?
Correct, just like it would be staircase to the second floor. Yeah, two-story.
Okay, only because I drove up there and I was looking at pitch and roof, and it doesn't look like it's tall enough?
Yeah, it would be better if we had, when we bring the architectural, we'll be able to see it better. And it will work out that it's kind of off-center, but in the center of the it's not tucked away in.
That's right, that's what I imagined with that roofline.
Yeah, it's offset from the center.
Okay.
The rendering, I think, will do much better justice, as well as the floor plan.
Okay.
Which we will have ready for the next meeting.
Is there any change to the height of the building, or is it just gonna remain as it is?
No change there. No change there. Like I said before, they will be proposing some exterior renovations, but the overall look and footprint of the building will remain the same.
All right, let me keep our meetings where we always do. Are you finished telling us what you want?
No, I just, I just wanted to know.
Okay, thank you.
So based upon the requirement for the parking, we require 24 parking spaces. Now, this will be a, I'll call it lack of, a full-time shul. It'll be used every day, there'll be three prayer services, morning, dusk, and then at sundown, as well as use on high holidays and holidays. So, in terms of parking layout, we have done the site plan to meet the code for the parking. We believe that we need that parking, because this will be an everyday, full-use shul. It will not be like another application that was involved in, where it was really just on the weekend, on the Sabbath, and very limited. This will be full use. So, we propose a total of 24 parking spaces that meets the code, and what we've done is, we have coming here with a new driveway, nearing where the existing driveway to the houses. Come up here, and we've developed this parking lot that goes parallel to the side yard here, and then turns, and then completes the parking lot here. It's basically outlined in orange. Along with that, we have readjusted the garage area, put some paths in here. The garage doors would be eliminated as part of the ARB. The access to that area there is the basin access, that would remain. And as you come around to the back, there's a wood deck that would remain, the parking would come up to there, a sidewalk would be added here, and then that would come around to the main entrance would be on this side of the dwelling. We've also proposed, there's a retaining wall that goes along the back and along the side, and that's to accommodate the parking area for the grading. It also works out that it kind of serves as a shield, it's a built-in retaining wall, so we're not on top of it, we're below it. So, if you're going to the parking lot, you'd be going up. The average height of the wall, I believe, is around four feet, I don't think you can see that, it does, it's probably like four and a half, or something in that range. We've also proposed some drains just along the parking area there, tying that into the existing drainage system located within Scunny Monk Road. The house is serviced by existing water and sewer within the country hollow subdivision. Basically, the extent of the site work, it's mostly the parking lot and some paths around. And that does meet what we require for the code. So now, on the zoning aspect of it, the R2A, the house of worship requires a one-acre parcel. This parcel is less than that, it's .38. As well as having to produce the required number of parking, we are exceeding the development coverage. Development coverage in R2A is 10%, and we are proposing 30%, based upon dividing the 24 parking spaces. So as part of this application, the applicant's legal counsel will be providing a summary of hopefully, the board considering exercising your ability to waive certain requirements of the zoning based upon a substantial religious burden. And the applicant's counsel will be providing that to the board and to your consultants for your next meeting. Those are the only two waivers we'd be requesting for this application. It pretty much just sums it up, if they didn't receive your consultant comments, if they go through them, there was a number of comments on landscaping. I believe that reviewing those weekend accommodated, all of those comments on landscaping. There was also a comment on parking was in the front yard, two of the spaces were within 50 feet. Looked at this again, and I think we can move those two parking spaces out of there, get them to another location, so we don't approach upon 50 feet. And there were some, several other small ends that I was not seeing real issues with. I'm sure your consultants will look through them, but we would respond back in writing to our position.
Anything else? Natalie? Would you like to go over your report, please?
Yes, thank you.
You have a microphone on, right?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Not to belabor the review of this application, because I think John provided a pretty good summary of what is being proposed, but.
Which memo are you working on, September 28th or October 11th?
October 11th.
Thank you.
As Mr. Keen stated, this application is before you for the conversion of a single-family home to a shul on a property that is a corner lot with frontage on Scunny Monk Road in the R2A zoning district. It was Dennis's recollection that this is the first application before you for a shul only, where prior applications may have been, where a shul and mikvah was as an addition to a residential home. This shul is allowed as a special permit use in the R2A district. We have reviewed the bulk area requirements, and we have the following comments. The code requires a one-acre lot for a place of worship, as John described. They're requesting a waiver for a non-conforming .93 acres, that is this lot. They have not included deductions for net lot area, which we believe they should at least show for the board's consideration, especially when considering the waiver for permitted coverage, which is used in the calculation for that. Code allows a maximum allowable impervious coverage of 10%. They are proposing 30%. And again, that's based on the parking area proposed, the residential dwelling in the driveway, as well as some other impervious site improvements. We did have one more comment regarding the setbacks and regulations in the front yard. There is an existing porch that is covered. The code does not allow that, that we are aware of, and we were wanting to ask the applicant to confirm if there were any proposed changes to that. And then furthermore, it would have to be clarified as whether that was an existing nonconformity. The applicant has provided the code required network spaces based on seating, that's 24 spaces. We suggest the board consider whether this is appropriate in a residential area and discuss with the applicant the need for this additional parking, although they have attested that they believe that it will be necessary. In your prior applications that were reviewed, the shul was only proposed for use on high holidays and Sabbath during times where worshippers were not permitted to drive. In this case, the applicant has explained the intent to use the religious facility for 24/7 and as needed, which may require the code required parking to be evaluated by your board. We've also listed in our memorandum some of the code requirements for required aisle width, where parking areas are greater than 10 and 20 spaces, which we believe the applicant should comply if the parking stalls provided remain the same. Based on our knowledge of the village's water and sewer system, it appears that the applicant has an existing connection to a private water district established for country crossing. We suggest that the applicant estimate the usage and confirm compliance with that water district operator. The sanitary connection is to the village's sanitary system. We have requested additional details on generated waste and details regarding compliance with the village's sewer administrator. We have minor comments on the stormwater facilities proposed, which we believe the applicant will take no issue. The applicant has provided details for lighting, we just request the fixtures be shown on the plan with the corresponding foot candles surrounding them. Based on the elevation of the property being greater than 600 feet, we believe it's subject to rich preservation requirements. They have already discussed that there may be changes to the facade, but not the building footprint, so details regarding the same should be provided. And other comments listed in our memorandum, we provided to applicant, and John has already attested that they would write a written response to those, so you'll look forward to reviewing them. And that's all we have for now. And if you have any questions?
Thank you, I'm just gonna have Jonathan and Rick go, and then I'll all the board members. All right, so we have your memo dated October 11th from Nelson Pope and Doris.
That's correct.
All right.
I think I'll limit my remarks, focus mostly on the landscaping, all of the zoning items we've mentioned have been brought up already. The landscaping requirements are in memo point five. There are three parts of the landscaping requirements in section 310, 27, C2, C3, and part D. Street tree is required every 40 feet along the frontage. There's supposed to be a 25-foot-deep front landscaped area, as well as five-foot-deep landscape dead along the front of the building foundation. And then sections D 1 through 3 require interior landscaping of parking lot islands with parking lot trees on a lot this size, as well as around the perimeter. They do show perimeter landscaping and a wall. Also, as this progresses, they should show the tree removals proposed and limits of clearing, and that should be on a landscaping plan. We also asked in our comment six that a site distance be indicated at the proposed driveway. And as I mentioned, the other points on the parking in the front yard, the lot coverage and minimum lot area have already been brought up.
Okay, that's it?
Yes.
Rick?
Just a couple, just a couple of comments. One on secret, I believe we need a signed EAF. There was an EAF that was submitted unsigned. I assume that this, assuming that that won't be accomplished, submitting a signed EAF. I believe that you can type this action as an unlisted action. Does not qualify for a type 2, because it's a non-residential improvement that exceeds 4,000 gross square foot of floor area. And the GML referral would be required. That's it? And John did a very good job of summarizing, especially the zoning issues and the potential waivers. And I think we ought to wait until we get a promised memo from their counsel with respect to trying to clarify and help you determine whether or not a waiver would be appropriate with respect to the substantial burden test.
Little quick question on the signed EAF?
You have a signed EAF?
Well, mine can tell you signed on page 3.
Okay.
I think, is that, we don't have it? Or maybe I have one that's, this woman receives, she needs October 2. I have a, I guess that's yours, is that your initials? It's like a scaly J and a, like a Z.
Was that submitted with the original, John, or that was submitted afterwards? Several of us don't have a copy.
I'll need two seconds.
Okay, all right. As long as it's been submitted, it'll be fine.
Sorry about that. I had to handle my car keys for, some of my cousins came home.
It appeared, if you have one, Marie, it appears that there was one submitted to the building department, we had, I had received electronically, and I think that Natalie did as well, those were unsigned. So, but this woman says assigned one, file that's fine.
Okay, perfect, all right. Natalie, just read your reports. On page there's no numbers here, where the referrals are required. Can you please add the Woodbury Highway on your future the village and the highway department, so they know what's going on up there? Also, you have the Woodbury Sewer Department, but you listed the Kirish Joel Water Department. I thought that was country crossing, that's not.
Right, it's, I'm sorry if that's inaccurate, it's a private water district established for country crossing.
So I think you'd need to change that, because it's not Kirish Joel that owns that water system, it's privately owned that, for that whole development.
Okay.
So we can try and get that right, meaning for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then all right. I just want to, I know we all have questions, but on we'll ask, I guess, the building department to submit a GML, will someone follow up on that, or?
Natalie.
Natalie, go. And also the EAF, I presume, Rick, your office will take care of that? Can we do the EF?
Yes.
Okay, and then we wanna make a motion now to declare this an unlisted action, board members? Make that motion. Thank you, can we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
It's four yes, so that's taken care of. And then Rick? I have a question. And I know this is, this is not our purview, but the covered porch, would that be an entrance or an exit in case of fire matic issues? John, I guess you can answer that.
Actually, I wanted to touch upon that. The covered porch actually is within the 50-foot, it just doesn't have an arrow on the map. It's actually this little box here.
Right, I see that box. So it's gonna be larger than what's there now, because right now there's a front door.
No, no, it's not, it's not gonna be any, it's not gonna be changed at all.
Oh, so the covered porch is going into the little piece there?
That's correct.
So there's gonna be grass there?
Yes, there's, where, you see the sidewalk?
Hold on a second, we have to change this tape. Yeah, okay.
See where the, there's a light sidewalk here?
Yep.
Coming up, coming up, and then you hit the porch, it's right here.
All right, so that porch isn't going to change, it's there right now, with a little overhang where they can sit out front?
Correct.
Now, is that gonna be a secondary?
Yes.
Access for, in case of emergency?
Yes.
All right, and with that respect, you're saying that you're removing the existing stairs? So that wood deck is only gonna have access from interior-wise to the house, not from outside?
No, we're actually going to, based on grading, we're gonna be able to ramp up, it'll be flush with that deck. So we're raising the grade there in the back, so that we don't use the stairs to the deck at that point.
Okay, now with all that being said, if you're raising the grading, this is probably for Natalie, I'm not sure how, was it like three feet, two feet, four feet, I'm not sure what the card grass is to that level of that deck, how much, that means you're bringing that much soil coming in?
It's about 18 inches, it's two steps.
It's two steps?
Yes.
So you're gonna put soil flushed up against the deck?
Yes, at that spot, yes, because it's a ramp coming up. So you're gonna start, you're gonna start a grade where the handicap stall is. And then that ramp is gonna come up and match where the existing staircase is for the deck.
But they're not gonna enter from the deck, they're gonna enter to the main entrance?
Correct, but the main entrance, the main handicap entrance will be from that deck in.
Okay, so then my question is, Rick, we're bringing in at least 18 inches of soil, that's gonna have to go up to this deck. How do we handle soil being brought in to Woodbury? I don't know the code.
Well, you may not be bringing in the soil per se, it could be, it could be a ramp out of concrete, that's just gonna go up to meet the deck.
I think what we, what should happen is you should have a detail on that, submit a detail, and that way Natalie and Dennis can look at that and determine it both from a code point of view, as well as from an engineering point of view. There are provisions in the code, I'm not sure that it covers something as small as this might have been. as this might have been, what this may be, or if it's not just a dent, it's not an issue.
Did you say you're gonna raise the elevation of the backyard to the parking lot?
Well, yeah, there's grading associated with the parking.
And you're gonna raise it, or not?
Some spots it will be raised, some mostly it's cut. That's why we're putting one.
Okay, that was my, okay, so I guess you and Natalie end up...
Or, I'll put a detail on there, I'll show you, I'll show you that one.
Alright, so now the main entrance is...
Also, I think that the chairman would also, I think essentially wants cut, fill that, should not be hard for something like this.
Okay. So where the main entrance is, it's gonna be on the side of the house, it's gonna be with a, it's on the corner. I just wanna make sure that the house is next door to McNeil, it's gonna be facing the, we have to take some more serious look at that. I saw the landscaping and everything. And then, with the current driveway is right now, there's a stone retaining wall there. That current stone wall, that retained wall, it says stone retaining wall, how high is that retaining wall currently that's there now with the driveway?
I believe it starts out, it's, it's probably only two feet, and then when you get to the back corner here, I believe it's, there's actually two walls. And I think the first wall, I'm just looking at it, getting my eyes are getting bad.
That's okay.
I believe it's about five feet, and then there's a second wall that goes around that, that looks like that's a two-foot wall.
Okay, so then, I guess my next question, with that being a graded from two feet to five feet, that stone wall's gonna come out and you're gonna be pushing the driveway backwards to accommodate the parking and make the driveway. How are you gonna do that differential if you're still gonna close off the garage doors? Are you backfilling in there as well, by garage door?
Yeah, see what happens is, as you come in here, this is a, the garage doors are in the basement, so you're, you're down low. And then the grade hops up to the back because this is your first floor entrance.
Alright, so then, access to the basement will no longer be from the garage doors?
Correct, they'll be, the garage doors will be eliminated, but there'll still be pedestrian access, there'll still be usable man doors. Because what'll happen is...
I got you, I see the little, I see the little, I'm just concerned about when you take the driveway out and you're gonna be pushing it back and you're gonna be, you're going upwards on a, on a slight.
Correct, so think about it, if the driveway's coming in like this, we're gonna change the grade, we're gonna come in and come up. So at, at this point, actually, it's, we're actually have a very slight fill, and then as we push more forward, we get into cut because obviously they're rising with retaining walls and we're rising at a, at a lesser slope.
Um, Natalie? Are, a picture of driveway, I know the roads are, can't be more than fifteen percent. I know this is not for the, just verify the driveway, because I'm concerned with the winter time, if they're coming out of that driveway, right across the street, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Alright, you can verify that for me as well. Alright, you did the deck, move this, the corner lot, you're gonna, you're gonna work on that with, with the driveway and the parking, we'll talk about that. With this being, it's a six-day operation, I presume, like, Sunday through Fri, Sunday through Friday?
Seven days.
Seven days, alright, but on the, on the Saturday, you're not gonna be driving to there, you're gonna be, you'll be walking. Alright, with that being said, are any buses gonna be coming here three times a day for morning, dusk, and?
No, no buses. The use of the shul will be actually for the neighborhood. A lot of the people will not come with cars, but accommodate people who are living like two, three streets away, they will come with the cars. So it's basically, there's no buses, they're only, only cars.
The reason why I'm asking that is because I have a couple of friends up there, and when I'm there, the children, there's constant buses going through there, and I know it's something that the residents up there, is the speed of a bus, and being that this is at the point of a three-point stop area, I just wanna make sure that, I wanted to make sure that there's no buses going to this facility.
The use of a shul is not a school, and there's no children. Actually, during the week, the children are praying in the school, so they're not coming to the shul at all, and there's no buses.
Alright, just, just so that it's clear, and that's fine, you made that very clear.
That's great.
We're gonna have a condition in the resolution that you cannot have buses taking people there, because if that was still open, then the board would have to go ahead and assess the impact of particular buses, traffic impact, et cetera. So in order to avoid that, we can avoid it, but it has to be a condition that there'll be no buses.
That's, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
We'll never have.
Alright, and then, with the three, with the three services, which you said morning, dusk, and sundown, that means people are gonna be coming and going three different times during the day, or, or like you said, the young, young children, are they gonna be there from like, straight from eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night? I'm just curious, is this gonna be run? I, I just wanna get, understand it.
I understand. Basically, people will come in the morning, pray in the morning, they will leave for work, they will come in the afternoon, depends on the winter and summertime, that depends on the day. Usually the dusk and the noon is basically usually the same time. Winter, it might be a different timing, it's when, in winter, you need the dusk praying because like earlier, it's like four, between four and five, coming back later, eight, eight o'clock, I don't exactly the time, we'll need to verify that for the, for the night prayer. But summertime, it's the same time, it's the same hour, every, the nighttime.
So, so the resident, the, the, the structure will not be occupied from eight to eight, like twelve hours straight?
Correct.
It'll be coming and going three times, two to three times a day?
Yeah, during the day, we'll probably be quiet.
Okay, that, I just wanted to have an understanding of that.
Different hours and different uses, and the Saturdays and the holidays, I can try to, as much possible, to point out to extend the narrative, with more details to explain that.
Okay, alright. Robert?
I was, I was wondering whether with the increased lactopin, with the additional parking, whether the collection system for the drainage of water and spreading off the road could handle that? And what is it, is it underground drainage on the road, or is it ditches?
They have, um...
It's catch basin.
It's catch basin, we just heard it's up there.
Could it handle the additional amount that maybe comes from that? I mean, especially with heavy rains that we've had?
Well, we could also ask our highway personnel to look at it, and they can also give us a feedback on that. Natalie, if you're writing this all down, I'm sure, hang out, thank you. Anything else?
That'll do it.
Okay. Sandy?
And again, I guess the plans in the future will show us more of this, but I'm, I'm curious about the, the MiFAs, because the basement floor, now I presume, is cement. When you build the MiFAs, are you drilling down, or are you building up?
Drilling down.
Okay. So the basement is what, nineteen, nineteen hundred square feet and changes? I know the management but is much larger, how, what size are those, those pools?
Uh, it's twenty, twenty gallons, it's a man stick. The reason is, the man stick has been used all every, every day in the morning, and the woman stick will only be used on Saturdays, because it's not practical to use during the week, there are setups of the big MiFAs, or they, you, women are only going, they're not going every day, they're not going every week.
Right. And again, I'm no engineer, but structurally, when you start messing around with that, that concrete floor, does that do anything as far as ability of the structure above?
No, we will provide the details for the building department or for you if you want to go with that detail. And it's basically being designed that way, it's far enough away from the footing, and if we need to do underpin details, we'll do underpin details, and I didn't want into that detail into that plan. You can see the man stick review is in the middle of the building, that's not affecting anything from the outside perimeter of the foundation. The other MiFAs is much clo, is closer to the wall, but it's still not at the wall, at the foundational, it's moved away like with the, I believe with about eighteen inches or more, so we are away from the footing, and...
You have something to look at, you had a proposal?
Oh, yeah. I will provide, actually, we'll provide the floor plans, we'll be much more detailed, so we'll try to provide this.
I just was curious, because I had, I was always under the assumption that once, once a home was, you know, built like that with a, with a concrete floor, that disturbance of that will...
No, the, basically a house, the way it was being built, you have the walls, the outside walls of the building, that's holding up the outside structure, and sometimes you have in the middle some bearing lines, but the whole concrete floor is not, and even though, there is no bearing on it, besides where we have special bearing lines, it's like four inches of concrete, you can just jack it up and build whatever you want.
And what is the depth usually of those poles?
I think it's about five feet.
Five feet, okay.
I'm not sure a hundred percent, we'll get you, we'll get you a section of the building to explain every story, besides the floor plan, we'll add a section, and you will see the section of the MiFAs too.
Okay, and you had, you said you have showers?
Yes.
The mechanical room will be in the basement as well?
Correct.
Okay. And the only other concern I guess I have is with the loft, that there's only one interior way up there, and God forbid there was a fire or something, how, there's no, there's no other means of egress out of that loft, correct?
Correct. It's, it's a small size, based on the building code, we're not required to have any more than one egress to that side of here.
Okay, same, mm.
Yeah.
I, I presume once we get the each floor plan, the, the basement, first floor, second floor, the loft, once we have all that listed out, I think it'll be a little more clear for us, and our engineer and his partners to review that, so once we get that, that might help us answer Randy's question?
Yeah, well, and we, we kind of rushed this together to show the building department that we're moving on this application, so that's why.
Okay, no, I just...
It's this component at this point.
Yeah, no, they're just, I'm just concerned about it. Okay, thank you. That's it?
Yep.
Alright, Chris?
I don't see it on these plans, but I guess maybe the future submission, the rain water collection system for the MiFAs, where is that gonna be located?
It's just next to the MiFAs wall, and it's connected to the, and it's coming from the roof system. Roof collecting the rain, but the, the water from the roof is coming into the MiFAs and the rain collection system.
So that, that, spike that from the outside to interior wise?
Yeah, correct. It will be detailed with water.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I'm having is maybe from the sewer department, do we have capacity in that area? You know, you're, you're going from a three or four bedroom house to a...
I know, that's, I was gonna, I was, after Sandy's thought, I was gonna ask Natalie to reach out to the water sewer department, and to, being that we don't supply the water up there, it's, it's from the water tank that's privately owned, how do we verify that that privately owned water system can handle the showers? And I understand that MiFA has it from the rainwater, how do we verify that and also the sewer, when, you know, when the water's released? So, some of the questions, I guess, will get answered.
Absolutely, and I think some of that's in our report already, there's some additional calculations that need to be provided by the applicant, and once they are, we will confirm with the appropriate people.
Now, being that this is a shul that's gonna have, what is it, seventy-two people total at a, at a time? Seventy, seventy-two seating? I know, it's not in our purview, it's for the building department to worry about interior wise with the number of people, but are there enough access, egress, ingress to the building to safely, God forbid something happened, that you can get seventy-two people out safely? I just wanna make sure that we have enough doors and areas for people to get in and out. That's my only concern, being that now, it's not a resident, residence anymore, so I just wanna make sure, being at, you know, meeting three times a day, up to three times a day, that safety is, is our concern as well. I know our department can get there, it just shouldn't be a problem. Yes, Rick, I'm sorry.
No, that's right, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I think normally it's completely a building department issue, right, and a code issue.
Right.
However, if that building department and code determination is that you need additional points of ingress and egress, it has potential to impact on site planning. So what I suggest is that Natalie asks Gary for an opinion as to whether or not, given the, the described use, whether or not the ingress and egress points are appropriate under the building code.
Okay.
And that way, you'll be, if he says yes, then that's, will be the end of your termination, but if he says no, then the applicant will have to go ahead and address additional ones, and that will then become part of your framework.
Okay.
I would, I would also suggest adding to that whether handicap access would be required to the loft or to the basement levels, since that also could impact the site plan issues.
Okay, that duly noted, thank you for, Chris, did you have anything else?
That's for next, next segment.
Okay, I know we, we're gonna wait for interior layout, and then parking, I know there was a request about parking, and being that this is in a neighborhood where some people could walk or they could drive to here, you're requesting twenty-four parking spaces? Or that's required?
That's required.
And what, how many are you requesting?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four.
I'm sorry, I wrote twenty-four per code, so it's thirty, okay. So that's something that this board needs to understand once we get a...
Kind of what we wanted really, I really wanted to touch on that because that's gonna drive everything we do for landscaping and islands and how we...
Right, that's, that's why, that's why I'm bringing it up. So, board members or guidance from our engineer? I pulled these numbers backwards. Require is thirty, but they wanna do twenty-four, so that they're asking for reduction?
I think based on the code requirements for seeing, they're, obviously provide twenty-four spaces, and that's what they are proposing.
Okay.
What, how that is affected now is the landscaping requirements and then also the coverage on site, so the impervious area that that adds.
Right, so, okay. And then, being that the house is on a corner, or we rounded a soft circle, there's a couple spots that have to be considered front, front yard, because being that it's on a corner, the whole section on the side of the house and the front of the house, it's considered a front yard? Am I not...
Um, yes, I believe the way the front yard is defined by the code is the ingress to the building, and then the opposite is the rear yard, and then the other is considered a side yard. I think Jonathan pointed out in his memo that there were two spaces that were in the front yard, and I believe John had said that he was going to revise the configuration to adjust that.
Yes, I, I made, these, yeah, your front yard extends like this, and, and center, these two spaces are within that, so I'm gonna, I was gonna propose to relocate those two spaces most likely to this, to this area right here, in front of the old garage. That would remove them from the, the fifty-foot area.
Okay, and then, alright, so being that it's fifty feet, that the other...
Yeah, I, I know...
Where the wood, where the wood deck is, we don't have to worry about those parking spots being on, it is in the backyard, but it's also on the front yard, because there's no side yard there.
Well, this is your front yard, and since it might take, your, where the front door fronts here, this would be your rear.
That's the rear? Being that it's a pie shape, it doesn't have a front, a rear, and two sides, correct?
The, the definitions would drive you that the, the street line is the front line.
Okay.
The, so, the semicircle along the front is the front line. Then it says anything opposite the front is the rear.
Okay.
So that, I would say that if, if it's shaped like a pie, it's got a front and two rears, but then, it also, it also says you can ask the building inspector to consider one of them as a side, but I don't know that it makes any difference really in the parking, because you're not allowed to park in the front, but you are allowed to park in the side or the rear. So, so the parking is going to be okay in those, in a rear or side yard anyway. So the, the big, the big issue is no parking in the front yard.
Okay. Board members, any other thoughts, questions?
No.
Alright, so, does that answer, are there any questions, John? Or, do you, do you have anything else for us?
No, I, I, I think, I think that's alright for right now.
Okay.
Would the board though consider potentially land banking? I mean, we've proven that we can get twenty-four spaces, so land bank a portion of those spaces, because we feel that we need the twenty-four, but, you know, we don't know, we may only need twenty. I don't know if that's something that you've done in the past that could alleviate some concern?
I don't...
concerns.
I don't, I don't know if I would want to, because let's say you might have family that comes up, a family, a family that's a block away, and they have family that comes up from another county or something, they might wanna drive their car over, and now you're gonna have, you may have more cars, you know-
Yeah, no, it's, it's hard to-
Yeah, it's, it's hard, so I don't know how other board members are gonna feel about that, you know? Are you, Sandy?
No, I, I mean, I want to see it from what it's supposed to be.
Robert?
I don't think so. We're, we're just also, as I, to support the board on that determination, in the past, we haven't done land banking very much, or shadow parking very much, and when you have, my recollection is, it's when there's a lot of parking spaces and it's very clear that only a fraction of those are going to be used. Here we're talking about 72 people and 24 parking spaces, that to me is not that great a delta that, uh, it's clear that they will not be used.
Okay. And also, when you revise your plans, I did see you say that you're gonna change to the outside of the building?
Yes.
Can we have those details as well, and same, they're gonna be the same colors or anything, because being that it is in rich preservation, we have to make sure that the color scheme is kept to where it should be.
We're, we're trying to provide very similar to what we provided on the other application, we didn't run here in colors and, and, uh-
Okay, that's right, you're up there. Okay, so you understand that. All right, so I guess we'll see you when you get your, over some plans together for us.
Yes, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're not, you're not here for any, anything else tonight, are you? Okay, just asking, I only see one more person in the audience, I'm, I'm concerned about, you're here for Kohl's?
Yes.
I guess, all right, I'll wait till we get some numbers from Ivy's four and five. All right, so Kohl's, you're up next. Oh, board members, before you leave, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, do we wanna do a site visit as a team, do we wanna go up there and look at everything once, once the plants come in, and then we can make a decision about a site, a site visit?
Yeah.
Okay, so for the applicant to be aware that we would like to do a site visit, and with your permission, you will have our engineer and our landscape, or if our attorney wants to join us, all right? All right, we're working, you're, within the timeframe that works best.
And one of, one of the issues here, um, might be that, although typically a planning board does not look at the inside of a structure, um, there are several aspects of this, of the interior that may affect exterior site plan things, so it's likely after they look at, um, the floor plan, et cetera, that they may also wanna have a view in a site visit of the interior, I assume you have no objection to that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, John. Hi, um, just state your name for the record, and then we can move forward.
Okay.
Is the microphone on, or you need to hold it up so you can hear it? You can hold it up. I think Jeff, well, I won't worry about it tonight, next time we'll just use a hand mic over there.
Hi, my name is-
Bring it on?
My name is Bill Lewis, I'm with Richard Bowen and Associates, we are architects for Kohl's Department Stores.
Okay, so a brief overview, the last time we saw you was back in May.
It's been a little while.
Yep.
So, um, the scope is essentially the same, um, what we're proposing is a rightsizing of the, uh, the existing Kohl's department store, um, what they would like to do is, is, the, the current store is about 88,000 square feet, they would like to build a demising wall and use that, um, about 25,000 square feet to a, a future tenant, it's part of a, a national program that they're going through with some of their larger stores, it's just that the nature of detail today, um, it's, it's leading them down the path to a lot of online sales, and they don't need the, the same footprint they needed, um, 10, 15 years ago when the store was built. So, um, so it'll be a two-part, um, or a two-phase project, the initial phase will be the, the demising wall, and the utility split, and the, um, the closing down of one of the entrances, that'll be, uh, under this submission. Phase two will be, the future tenant will be all these supermarkets, they will come in, um, uh, with their own architect as a separate permit, they will do the improvements for that, uh, their portion of the, the building, on their side of the east side. So we, we provided, um, their proposed elevations, just so you can get an idea, we were hoping they would be there, um, at this meeting, they were a couple weeks behind, but, um, based on the schedule, we, we're just trying to get the, um, the project up and running again, so we can have, um, you know, the building demolished when they're ready to start their improvements.
Okay. I'm gonna jump over to Natalie. Oh, before, I'm sorry, before you, on the application, um, it says property owner of Ribery Center Hermann LLC, and it says, um, Schedule A is attached, Schedule A doesn't have individual names, it just has the names of the different LLCs that are on here, and the G L form says Ribery Center Hermann Co. Co. LLC is 100% membership interest, but that being said, there's no signature on here, on the main application, do we need to have names, or, I, I, Rick, that's a question for you, because I'm a-
It has to be signed, and it has to be signed by somebody with authority to sign on behalf of the corporation, even when the LLC is owned by another LLC, um, which is permissible, um, they have to show, if that own, if that member LLC, that's the sole member, then the intent of the Orange County form is to then identify the members of that LLC, you can't, rather than get around, trying to get at who's in the LLC by simply saying, well, we have this LLC that's a sole member, in which you still have this lack of transparency, so, but ever LLC has some individual members ultimately, needs to be identified, and it has to be signed by somebody with authority, do you understand what I'm saying?
Um, I don't exactly, I, I kinda get the gist, but-
Okay, so what, what the county wants is that LLCs, it's hard to tell who they are-
Right.
Um, because they're, they're not listed in the state filing as to who are the members, et cetera, it's very difficult to determine whether or not there may be conflicts of interest for the board members or consultants, because they don't know who's involved, and if my wife was a member of the LLC, I would have to recuse myself, um, so, and although LLCs are allowed to be, have its sole member, another LLC, that really doesn't shed any light on, on that issue, so at some point in time, there's gonna be an LLC that has individual members, and so that's really what this form is getting at from the county, is to indicate some individual members that have the ownership that ultimately ends up in the LLC involved here, and then it has to be signed by somebody who has authority for the applicant LLC, okay? It's, it's not that difficult, it requires some looking at it, you may have to ask the attorneys for the corporations as to who, who they are.
Right, we did, we sent it off to the developer, and they, they kinda filled out the form and shipped it back to us, so, you just have to get back to them.
We'll dive down there and get the actual, yeah.
It's not gonna hold up the setting of a public hearing, but you need to get that before the approval.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, Natalie?
Thanks, Maria. So, our comments on this application are limited, and the application has only been slightly modified from the applicant's submission in May and the prior appearance before your board. Mr. Lewis actually brought up a good point about the Aldi storefront, and we were under the impression, based on the elevation submitted for Aldi's, that this may be a separate application before the board.
Will be.
Okay, so that was one of our comments, is that, you know, this is, that is going to be a separate application, it should be clear interaction, and, you know, consideration of that should be limited at this time. We also just kinda wanted to bring to your attention that the applicant has modified the color of the Kohl's storefront to match the brick versus the concrete masonry units, it's a little darker rather than the lighter tan, lighter tan and brown, um, they've provided a photo depicting the adjacent storefronts for comparison, which I think your board requested at the last meeting, um, so you can consider whether that's appropriate with the existing, uh, adjacent stores. We also had asked the applicant to confirm the appropriateness of the interior layout and the existing striping and depressed curb that's shown at the entrance proposed for abandonment, that may not be practical, impactful anymore, based on that being abandoned not only for this application, but for the future rightsizing and future tenant. And lastly, one of our larger comments has to do with the signage, and the proposed sign at the front of the building being adjacent to the entrance rather than above it, and then also on the, on the side of the building where they're still showing the existing Kohl's sign, and whether or not that may or may not be considered an advertising sign, we have to discuss that with the building department, but, um, maybe the applicant should discuss their intentions for that. And that's all we have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. I know I didn't have the report from your office, but as we go further on, because I know there's gonna be issues open for you to up as well, Rick, thoughts, concerns, what we need to do here?
I just need a clarification, um, in Kelly's notes, who was here last time this was here, she indicated that she discussed with you that it's a type-two action of the seaker, but it indicated whether or not you actually took that action, so I wasn't sure whether or not you took that action to identify that it's a type-two action on the seaker.
I don't show it from May that we did a type-two.
Okay, so I suggest that you do that at this meeting, and other than that, it's just a public hearing, it has to be set.
Okay.
And you can ask us to prepare a resolution if you think that, uh, it's ready for that.
Okay. Um, you, you don't have it here, you don't have the renderings here, but the way this rendering is looking, and taking away the brighter color from the south side of the Kohl's name, and I understand that, I guess those two doors or three doors are for Kohl's, or is the one doors for, the double doors for Kohl's, I presume, that's it?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
The single doors is temporary.
For the other side.
For until, um, it's a temporary condition until Aldi comes in, um, just as an empty box, we need to, need to egress out of it, so.
As you can see on your diagram here, you have, when this project came in many, many years ago, we had the store put these, leaving home with, um, lattices and with, with plants. You're taking away the door now in this lighter color, now you're showing me this brown, boom. I want some landscaping to match with the lattices, I think it would look good, I'm sure, you, you see what I'm saying, Jonathan, and I'm sure, uh, Stu could probably tell you what happened many years ago, there's nothing there now, and it's just blah, and from this design, in the top, it shows the two corners that come out from the main door, you, they're not coming out here, so it's throwing the whole thing off, it shows it on the north side, but it does, I can't see it reflected on the south side, the, the dimensional of the building, so, I'm sure it's still gonna be where the door is currently, it's gonna be butted out, but you're not showing me the two points on here that I can see clearly, and, um, that's just something that, from sitting here on both sides of the board, we've gone to great pains in making sure that this looks nice and appealing, and I'm sorry to see that they're not going to go with the lighter color that they're going back to the brown, because I thought we expressed that at last meeting to keep it, even, even though it's not the main door, but that's up to the board to decide, because I know from looking at, then I, when I go to look at this, I see the Kohl's sign, I see a different color, different color, and I see this, and it's like, it's like thrown in my face, and I, I just can't understand what they want to do there, it's-
Looks like the roof line changed.
The whole roof line changed, and it's going, and it's, so, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about that, but I'll let you, I'll let you back up.
Well, I agree, that's the first thing I noticed, the color, I don't like it, it's too dark, yeah, I mean, that, that was a very attractive story, still is, as it is, so this makes it less attractive, far as my concern.
Yeah, so, I don't, and, and the way the, where the current door is, it's set back in dimensions, and it has the lighter color, and when you look at this, it looks like boom, it cuts it right off, and there's no, I don't know what they're gonna do, I know this is a proposal from Aldi, but it just, I don't know, it's just not sitting with me, I don't know if the rest of the board members feel about that.
Lovely.
Okay? Sandy, on that note, I just want it to be aesthetically pleasing, and I can see moving the, the trellis over with the plants in places where the front door is gonna be removed, I don't know if that will soften it, and why it can't be the lighter color that's to the north, if you don't wanna do it that beige-y, yellowy, go in between, I don't-
Well, I, my recollection, which, don't take it for, um, I thought that we were still born to try to make it symmetrical, starting from the, yeah, that's it, yeah, I have it, starting from the, the sole entrance, that moving out, the colors were gonna be symmetrical, and it looks like we started to do that with these three columns.
Originally the, the main.
But then, that, the far south of it, this-
Right, right, so-
Symmetrical, I mean, if you're trying to visually keep it the same, some of the same color, then it should be this lighter color.
Yeah, and actually, that was a response that came this last time, and I apologize, I wasn't able to make the hearing last time, so I counted out a second hand, so essentially there's two, what I would call field colors on the building, there's the darker color of the brick, there's the lighter color of the CMU, um, we were torn back and forth, and honestly, um, we wanna pick one of those two colors, the, the lightest color, the, the yellow, it kind of accentuates the entry, so that's why we, we don't want to, because now it's gonna be the, the field color of the building, we don't wanna have it that, that pop of color at the entry, we wanna reserve that for the entrance, but, um, you know, we'd be happy to, to make it that color of the, of the block.
Well, I think that's what we're talking about, not the yellow, this color, that color, lighter color.
Correct, yes, 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 okay.
The one that has the trellis on it.
Yes, understood, okay, that, that makes perfect sense.
And, and again, with the lattice on there, I think then, even though structurally it's different, but at least the colors might fool the eye.
And I, and I think, so, so lattice, if you look, um, and I apologize, because we're working with, with two different architects, it's two different projects, we didn't, we weren't able to get their, um, their files to add to our elevation, and maybe that will help, so you can see one consistent, um, elevation.
But are you, I mean, here, it clearly looks like you're taking the, the corners, the roof line down, it looks like you're making it, it looks like the only raised part of the roof line is, is the yellow part over the door.
Correct.
And that is what, so you're bringing that other one down.
That, that, yes, because we want, we wanna, we want to decent, desensuate the, um, the entrance that's being removed, it kinda creates, so that becomes the field of a building.
Right.
Um, and I agree, I think if we relocate or add that trellis, um, over in front of it, that, that would help with that, to kinda read this, this, uh-
And the lighter color, the tan color.
It's the same, it's the same color it's in front of right now.
Yeah.
Did that work for you?
That helps.
Okay.
But, I mean, are we clear on what we're saying and what you're thinking?
So, you just wanna take the left side, make a copy of it, and use it?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, for the session, right, if I spike up here, the left side-
It would be, kind of in front of-
Yeah, we can show them, yeah, as long as we talk in the microphone, but we should have had a rendering up there for the public.
So we're basically saying this slab should be this color.
Correct.
And this lattice should be there.
It's there.
So, it's kind of, I mean, even the colors are different, it's just visually-
So it's kind of, I mean, even the colors are different, it's just visually the colors. With that being said... I think we wanted Kohl's above the door too, but I think they said that that couldn't be changed. Yeah, that's, that's fine. We just need the ARB form revised to have the tan color on here. Excuse me?
I think that was the original and we changed it, so we'll go back to that. That's not a problem.
And, and what about the Kohl's sign on the right side of the door?
That will be, that will be removed.
That will be removed.
So if you kinda look at the, the new Aldi, that whole side, that whole corner is, is gonna be kind of adjusted and modified.
Okay, so Rick, you're gonna make note that the Kohl's sign inside the building that soon to become the adjacent future tenant will be removed.
It should be put on the plan.
Okay, so we can...
And the, the color scheme needs to be changed and wherever a side inch needs to be changed because the public needs to look at that for the public hearing. I think if you wanna have it in your next meeting, the applicant has to get it in by So if you can't get it by Friday, then you should be set in a public hearing for the following meeting.
All right, Chris?
And any changes to the ARB form as a result of...
Right.
Modified color scheme.
All right, so Sandy, you finished?
Yeah.
Because one thing I forgot, but I'll let Chris go. Go ahead, Chris, go ahead.
And just to confirm, it is gonna be a set of double door outward opening, steel doors that you'll paint to match the...
Correct, they'll be flush, how about the doors? Exit only. And it should be on the plan and some kind of note to that.
When you say plan, can, can this be used planned or are you...
Yes, because it's an ARB, so we don't have a site plan.
Right.
The reason for what I'm doing, I know the planning board knows as well, but for the applicant, the reason that we're being particular with respect to putting things on a plan, including any notes, is for ease of the building department of making sure that what you're doing is in accordance with the plan that was approved rather than having to pour through conditions in a resolution. It's a lot easier to look on the plan and see this, make sure the colors are consistent, make sure whatever doors are supposed to be there in the color scheme and whatever notes with respect to signage are all correct. And obviously the public should have that too in order for them to be informed to make public comments.
Okay, so will you be representing, will you be going back here for Aldi?
I will not be back for Aldi. But I will be back for public then, for Kohl's. That's a separate meeting from this, so they're probably gonna be back presenting next year or the week after, but I don't think we'll...
All right, will that be a question? Then I'll hold my question for, even Monday coming back. Because I'm concerned about traffic and, yeah, but that would be a whole different, I won't bore you with that. All right, so do you think that you can have a revised, one of these, what we just discussed about moving the sign, the color and submitting...
And the doors.
The doors and submitting a revised application? Actually, they're closed Friday, you'd have to do it tomorrow.
I'll need to...
And they close Monday. Actually, a little bit...
Why is it gonna be closed on, they're moving, they're moving to...
Actually, it's, we have three weeks, right?
Yes, we do.
So we have three weeks, so we can change it.
Oh, you have three weeks?
Yes, we have an extra week.
Okay, so next Friday.
By next Friday.
So next Friday, so you have time.
Okay.
All right, so...
And the hearing is the...
Well, we haven't gone that far yet. We haven't gone that far. If you can get everything in to the building department by the twenty-sixth, board members, we'd really like to entertain a motion to put this on for public hearing for November seventh for ARB and in doing so, authorizing the attorney to draft a resolution of approval.
I'll need the motion.
I'll second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else for us today?
No, okay.
You could.
Would it help if we, if we add, can I go stand the Aldi to the elevation even though it's not part of this? We weren't sure if we'd confuse people or not confuse people.
I...
To confuse people.
Yeah, don't...
Okay, so we, we...
We have a free to take. I would leave it, you're not doing Aldi, leave it off.
Okay.
All right? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. We have items number four and five. Is anyone here for the Feldman application? Anyone else at all, applicant here for the Feldman application? With no one coming forward, I'm gonna offer a motion to adjourn. Oh, timeout, oh, timeout.
Just before you do, you've been advised by the building department that the reason that this is on is because of apparently justice court action that they have been ordered to come back here. At least that's what I get from the emails from the building department. So I don't think it's something that should just be passed over, the fact that they do not come here. So I think it should be addressed either, actually, I'll, I'll propose what I think would be appropriate.
Okay.
And that is that you authorize someone, whoever you want, to go ahead and draft a letter to them and maybe the, probably appropriate from the building department. So Natalie can advise the building department, just to advise them that they are required to appear at this next November seventh, the matter will be put on for an agenda and that if they fail to appear, the court will be notified.
All right, so will you be writing that letter to the building department or you want Natalie to?
Natalie and I can work on it.
Okay, sounds good, yeah. All right, thank you. Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for reminding us about that. I made a motion to adjourn, I forgot who's Chris seconded or made the motion, whoever. Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and just to remind everyone, our next meeting is November seventh at the Village Hall, not here.
No longer here.
No longer here. This is a great run, thank you everyone.